I'm standing in for Chair Sarah Mills tonight, who has an unsteady, unsteady internet tonight. So, welcome to the TC1 zoning stadium working session for June 14th, 2022, for the Anar Plan and Commission. We have kind of an unusual format tonight. Mr. Leonard is going to be really facilitating this whole meeting as he and Mr. Leo have presentation and have that all in hand. So I really will be kind of passing it over to you, Mr. Leonard, since I don't believe we need to do a roll call right for working session. So.
Nope, that's correct.
Hand it over.
Thank you so much. And thank you, everybody, for attending this evening. As Commissioner Gibbrandl indicated, this is sort of a hybrid informational webinar slash working session. We, speaking on behalf of the Planning Commission, we welcome these opportunities to get community feedback in this format in advance of a petition that eventually might end up on a formal agenda of the Planning Commission. And so is our plan for this evening. Just a couple of notes. This is, of course, the proposed, a proposed city-initiated rezoning of the West Stadium and North Maple corridor. This is the first public meetings, which is to say that no process has been started. This is an opportunity, one of two meetings. The first was held last week in person at Westgate Library. This is the second. This is an opportunity for both staff and in this case, the Planning Commission to hear questions, to hear comments, to hear your feedback, and of course, at a minimum, to make you aware of this initiative being considered in the city. As we go through it, City Planner Alexis de Leo is going to walk you through a presentation, providing an overview for anybody that attended the in-person meeting on last week. It is the same presentation. We'll be covering the same content. And then, in lieu of a specific public comment period, the bulk of the meeting is going to be public comments. After that presentation, we are going to open it up to questions, answers, comments, question, feedback. I would ask that, to the greatest extent possible, feel free to take advantage of the Q and A function at the bottom of your Zoom screen. That affords us the ability to take in and document via the transcript of this meeting, which is being recorded, I think everybody should have heard, for your feedback to be memorialized. However, we will also provide an opportunity for speakers who would like to address and ask questions in person. We will run that very similarly to a public hearing, where I will, I will identify you by name if you're logged in by Zoom or by phone. If you press star nine to raise hand feature other than the button, we'll call on you by the last three digits of your phone number. Under most public hearings, we would ask to keep your comments under three minutes, and that we would do the same here, but just in light of having so many people following, just ask you to keep your comments as and questions as quickly to the point as possible. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to City Planner Alexis de Leo.
Thank you. Give me, I want to do the always awkward screen share. All right. Okay, I trust you all can see. Great. All right. Welcome. I have mentioned I'm Alexis de Leo, beginning the same presentation that we prepared for the in-person meeting on Thursday, June 9. This is a sort of informational meeting and a feedback meeting for the TC1 Transit Corridor District, applied to, possibly applied to North Maple West Stadium area rezoning area. I'll get it together. Um. It is not thinking all that well. All right, one second. I'm going to stop the screen share. Start over. Why? All right. Give me one more second. Okay. So much better.
Alexis, if you have any issues.
All right. I think we're, are we cooking with gas now?
I see it. If you have additional problems, I can jump in and share my screen too, so.
Yeah. All right. So why is it? Okay. Okay. Now we're cooking with electricity. Just start over again. Pretend like nothing ever happened. Hi, my name is Alexis. City Planner with the department. Tonight I'm going to be talking about the North Maple West Stadium area rezoning to TC1. TC1 stands for Transit Corridor District. This is the same presentation that we gave on, in person, on Thursday, June 9, for anyone who was in attendance there as well. A brief agenda for tonight. This is an introduction, a learning tool, and a feedback opportunity about this city initiative. I'll talk about the study area. Talk about the Transit Corridor District, the rezoning process, the development approval process, and non-conforming situations. And then we'll go right into questions and comments. So and Brett went over. We'll try to use the chat as much as possible, but raised hands are fine too. About this rezoning area, our study area is North Maple and West Stadium, starting on Dexter at the top, where the Aldi is, going all the way down and past Pauline. It is about 193 parcels, over 200 acres, a mile and a half long, a half a mile wide. And some fun facts. The average parcel size is about an acre. The largest parcel is Maple Village at 27 acres, and the smallest parcel has just a little bit less than 2,500 square feet, and that's at 2,265 West Liberty. More data for you. The study area has eight zoning districts in it listed. C1, C1B, C2B, C3, M1, O, P, and R5. You can see the C2B district, I'm sorry, the C3 district is, has the highest parcel count, and it's the, covers the largest percentage of area. It's the highest land mass. The district, it's a transit corridor, and it is served by two routes running the length of the corridor, the 28 and the 32, and five routes cross the corridor at some point. The 26, 29, 30, 31, and 34. About the TC1 district itself. We've actually moved fast in the planning world. In 2020 is when City Council asked the Planning Commission and staff to try to come up with a new zoning district that would support transit, support transit, and also included with that request was, give us some recommendations for where we should rezone. In April of 21, the TC1 district was considered by Planning Commission. They recommended approval of it, and they recommended in order that we consider rezoning the state and Eisenhower area, and then Stadium and Maple, then Washington and Plymouth Road. So we move, City Council approved the TC1 in June of 21, about a year ago today. And then in February, right after that, we moved through the rezoning process. And in February, the Planning Commission recommended the state and Eisenhower area for rezoning, and City Council approved that MAC change in April. Then we carry forth now here tonight. We're talking about the West Stadium, North Maple area. The TC1 district is intended along existing transit corridors with, we defined as regular fixed service provided by the ride, primarily on established commercial and office sites. This is a little bit key. As you know, corridors around town, up and down, the ride travels them all, but some of them are mostly residential. We have not included any residential areas in our study area either time for rezoning to TC1. It is focused on the parts of the existing corridors that are established commercial or office sites. The district has been created to facilitate, encourage, and support redevelopment and infill to achieve our master plan and our comprehensive plan goals for mixed-use developments, corridors that support and sustain transit service, and encourage affordable housing, just encourage more housing choice, more sustainable forms of development, developments with reduced resource and energy needs. And the district has been crafted with some standards that really get at pedestrian-friendly designs. These are critically important because all users of any mode of transportation, including personal automobiles, begin and end their trips as pedestrians. The permitted, a summary of the permitted uses in the TC1 district includes residential category, multifamily residential offices, including general, medical, dental, and financial, commercial and services, almost all types, including hotel, personal services, general retail, restaurants, bar, food service, and there's a R and D component as well. What it does not include are auto-oriented uses. The TC1 district was basically based, and it is a amalgamation of our D2 district and Office District. These uses are in line with what is permitted in the D2 districts downtown, but they have, which already excludes auto-oriented uses. This list further excludes some as well. But the basis and the inspiration for TC1 was taking the best parts of the D2 and the best parts of the O Office District. TC1 district has some specific standards, and in the ordinance, it looks like the box there. I know it's small. You're not really supposed to be able to read it in depth, but this is the way the ordinance is laid out. It has six categories. So we address the buildings themselves, the building frontage, the site, access and circulation, off-street parking, and the parking lot. And it's broken down to, the standards are for three building types and across two classifications, small lots and large lots. Requiring these specific standards ensures that the development meets the intent of the district, that it is supporting and sustaining transit, that it is enabling housing choice, it's more sustainable development, and so forth. Some of the, like the actual standards, just highlights, but some of the actual standards in the building category, the buildings have to have a first-story height of 15 feet minimum. The first floor has to be 60% transparent, meaning windows, and has to have functional entrances and street-facing doors. For the building frontage, that building has to span 75% of the lot width. We want those, we want to create a street wall up and down the corridor, the kind of feeling that you feel downtown with the buildings lining the streets with few gaps. The, for the site, the site is required to be designed as blocks. If you have a big enough site, you're going to have to pretend and break it down into smaller components and have sidewalks in between each, and the measurements mimic the downtown blocks. So we are talking big blocks here, but nevertheless, big downtown is not the same as big stadium or big Washington. There's a requirement regarding access and circulation. You can only have one driveway, maybe two, depending on size, but one driveway. For required parking, there is no minimum required parking in the TC1 district. The ma, the required parking that's normally in the code, that minimum becomes the TC1 maximum. But we do require bicycle parking and EV spaces as traditional. So there's no minimum. But if you're going to provide parking, we do have a maximum, and you still need to provide the bicycle and EV spaces. And the parking lots themselves, they can only go in the side or rear yards. That means to the side or behind buildings. And the size of the parking lot, its footprint cannot exceed the size of the building's footprint. We want this to be a building-forward, a people-forward district, not a car storage-dominated district. The TC1 district has traditional developmental, dimensional standards, just like every other district. For floor area ratio, it has none, but this is not quite a blank check. There are front setback requirements, the maximum front setback, 15 feet for mixed-use buildings, 20 feet for townhouses or apartments. There are side and rear setbacks required when the lot butts residential zoning. The height limit is variable. There are four tiers of height limit, depending on how far the building is from a residential district. And there are no minimum lot area or lot width standards. A little bit more about the height. And this was sort of based on what's there, the, I'm sorry, what is the standards that are there now, not the actual buildings, but what are the standards there now and the standards of the Office District? The height limits start at 55 feet when you are closest to a residential within 80 feet of it. In the second tier, when you are between 80 and 300 feet from residential, the maximum height is 75 feet. When you get to the 300 to 1,000-foot area, height limit is 120 feet. The height limit jumps to 300 feet when you are more than 1,000 feet from residential. That was a bigger deal when we talked about the state and Eisenhower area. But when you apply the height limits and the West Stadium Maple Corridor, there's only one small area that actually is eligible for this height limit. So this is not as, this is, will not be as much of a factor in the state, in the stadium area. Nevertheless, and because this is kind of a a thing, we have an interactive height tool. You can find the tool at www.a2gov.org/tc1rezoningstadium. And you can see the variable height limits applied to any site, actually across the city, but we'll focus here on the Stadium Corridor. You can select the height buffer, which is going to be in the upper right corner, and if you select 80 feet, the 80-foot buffer, within that, between that line and the residential district, which is, in this example, it's yellow. That's where buildings can be 55 feet tall. You select the 300-foot buffer, for that's going to give you the 75-foot height limit. And if you select the 1,000-foot buffer, that's going to give you the 120-foot height limit. You can also select them all three simultaneously, which is what I've got here. And if you select the 30-foot buffer, that will display the rear setback line. I'm going to break from, and I hope I don't regret this, but I realize if you were in the meeting on Thursday, we had display maps, some screenshots. There are no walls here virtually, so I will break for a second and show you the interactive tool, so you get a little bit more flavor, because the folks in person had this a little bit. All right. Again, with the awkward pause, but let me know when you see my. I got a thumbs up. Great. So this is our interactive tool, and you can use your mouse to zoom in, zoom out. For example's sake, and since I'm right here. This is Westgate. Zingerman's Roadhouse is here. I'll even zoom in a little bit more. Here is Westgate, Zingerman's Roadhouse. Here is the main Westgate. The library was here in the corner. I'm going to select the 80-foot buffer. And here, it's showing up in this blue line. And so if this area was zone TC1, and then yellow is the residential zoning district. Here's where the height limit is 55 feet. I'm going to select the 300-foot buffer. And so between the blue and the green, and then same here, the back corner of Westgate. Between these lines, that's where the 75-foot height limit is applied. And I will select the 1,000-foot buffer. And so between the green line and the yellow, this is where buildings can be 120 feet tall. So if this was real life, the CVS could be 100, no, that's Walgreens, whatever. This building could be 120 feet tall. The Zingerman's Roadhouse could be 120 feet tall. The Westgate could be 120. But the but these office buildings behind, they're on Collingwood, these would be 75 feet. And then you can see here, the only place in the whole district that could have a 300-foot tall building, because otherwise everything is too close to residential, would be most of the LA Fitness and the bank here, plus the mattress shop. I will zoom out a little bit to give you just a flavor of the whole district. We've got Aldi here and the Health Center at the top, moving down. You can see there's the height buffers, mostly right along Stadium. That's where the 120-foot height limit, if approved, could be on the east side of Stadium. We're talking mostly 75-foot height limit. Same thing when you get south of Liberty. That's the way it goes. I'll stop now, but you know that this tool is available to poke around yourself, and we can pull it back up. I will go back to the slideshow. And yes, things I think are working. Great. Okay. Now to speak about the rezoning process. The rezoning process, whether it's city-initiated or owner-applicant initiated, it follows the same basic process. Starts with a citizen participation meeting. And last week's meeting and tonight's meeting qualifies as our citizen participation meeting. We have invited everyone inside of the proposed rezoning area, as well as everyone who lives or owns within 1,000 feet of it to these meetings. Then the next step is actually submitting a rezoning petition. Work up the paperwork, say what area you want to be rezoned, move it through the analysis. Step three, that petition is reviewed by city staff, who offer a recommendation in our staff report. The Planning Commission then holds a public hearing and makes a recommendation to City Council. This is a legislative decision, deciding and changing the rules and ordinances of the city. So the Planning Commission is a recommending body. City Council, it takes two meetings. The first meeting is a first reading. And then a month later, the City Council holds a second reading, a public hearing, and they'll decide on the petition. The final step is the zoning map is changed, and the standards and regulations apply if it's been approved. Now about the development review, approval process. This is the, this is not even the whole process, but development approvals come in the form of zoning permits, building permits, or site plans, and they're required for any construction in the city, from remodeling a kitchen in a single-family home to a new high-rise downtown or redeveloping, remodeling a shopping center. The UDC provides the required development standards that must be met and the process for applying and approving that work. And why does it matter for tonight? Because compliance with the TC1 specific standards and dimensional standards is required for approval of a site plan, but it's not required for issuance of a building permit. And what requires a site plan approval? No site plan is required for remodeling or interior renovations. Permits are required, but not a site plan. And as sort of a side note, you can also build a brand-new single-family home. Those are also exempt from site plan review, but not a brand-new restaurant or something like that. Site plan, as I'm alluding to, is required for additions to existing buildings and new buildings, excluding single-family homes. And because we are changing the rules, we are changing the development standards. So we might be creating non-conforming situations. So about those, there are three kinds of non-conforming situations: uses, lots, and structures. Any use that is not permitted in the TC1 district will become a non-conforming use. And the code says, non-conforming uses can remain active until they're not active. And that decision is not mine or the city's. That is the owners. They can remain active indefinitely. But if they stop, when they stop, then all new uses must conform to the TC1 district permitted uses. Non-conforming lots, in this case, is not so much of a big deal. The rezoning will not create any non-conforming lots. The minimum lot area in the TC1 district is none, so therefore, they all meet the standard of none. And the final kind of non-conforming, non-conformity is non-conforming structures. Any structure that doesn't conform to the TC1 specific standards or dimensional standards will become a non-conforming structure. It could be too tall. It could be too short. It could be too close to the road. It could be too far from the road. But the specific standards and the dimensional standards apply to the thing being touched, the building, the site, the parking lot. A parking lot is a structure. Even if it's flat, just asphalt, it is an improvement upon the land. So by definition, it is a structure. Existing buildings not being touched can remain as they are in the non-conforming world. But additions to the existing buildings must conform to the standards, or at least the addition can't create a new or worsen the non-conformity. And then any new building obviously must conform to all of the standards of the TC1 district. So this ends my prepared spiel and the formal presentation, and I have some contact information and more information up here. But I think we'll move into the Q and A and the comment part, because I know this was a lot of information, and I also anticipate a lot of questions. And we also welcome comments. I would say that we are studying the area from top to bottom, side to side, but we haven't yet submitted a petition. I think the discussion is a lot about the margins. Where should the rezoning boundary be? And the discussion should be about what is included, maybe what is not included. And this is, we haven't actually submitted a petition because we are gathering that information tonight.
Thank you very much, Alexis. Thank you. I've been trying to address a lot of the questions that came into the Q and A during Alexis's presentation. I got to some of them, not all of them. I'm going to play, as Alexis indicated, a bit of MC and direct questions to her. And just acknowledge some comments. I do see one raised hand. So generally, I, I am going to try to address some of the comments that we have first, and then I'll try to bounce back and forth to speakers. So feel free to keep your hands raised. I'll get to you shortly. One just comment that with the city, please slow down and not rush through this proposed TC1 zoning. That's something else we've heard. A question to Alexis, how will this impact bicyclists, specifically safety, bike lanes, et cetera, referring to surrounding roads versus the building environment? My initial reaction is that often many of the physical and form configurations that are really conducive to transit, pedestrian, sort of final leg of a trip, are also really conducive to a variety of non-motorized transportation modes. This is private property regulation, so it is not necessarily an investment strategy for the public right-of-way. Is there anything you want to add to that?
No, that was nail on the head. So these standards are for the private property. The, I like to describe it, the first floor of City Hall, which is the Planning Department and the Building Department, we regulate, and it's the customer service desk that collects the, you can pay your taxes. We regulate the private property. The fourth floor is the Public Services and Engineering Department for the city, and they, they regulate the right-of-way. The bike lanes are in the right-of-way. I agree, there are bike lanes on West Stadium. They're not separated bike facilities. I think they could use to become the next generation. I think how this works, this one, this does not directly impact anything about the right-of-way, including the bike lanes. But with more users and more demand, I think that's more incentive to upgrade our, the bike facilities that are out there in Stadium.
Great. Questions about building heights, and this was something that came up at the session last week. Proposed building height, as mentioned above, is a concern. Sun is critical for non-motorist commuting, such as pedestrians and cyclists, especially in winter. What level of attention is being devoted to such issues? especially in winter. What level of attention is being devoted to such issues?
Um. It taller buildings will shade things um east, west, and south of them. Uh one advantage here, the Stadium Boulevard and Stadium Corridor kind of runs north-south. Um so it has the best chance of um of having sun. None of our zoning or zoning districts, you know, we don't um we don't require light studies and we don't um tailor our standards to preserving, preserving light. Um it is a balancing district. The taller buildings do cast longer shadows. Um Stadium Boulevard is a fairly wide boulevard. And so that's more area for the sunlight, but we haven't, we don't have a um shadow prevention regulation.
Yeah, and I would see, um I I sort of referenced in a previous uh answered written comment that um we do hear actually both sides of that, too. We also hear of of concern about a um excessive sun exposure. At times, the conversation at at the table about a development proposal is how do we provide shade to this area that is otherwise going to be very exposed uh to the elements? So that's definitely a balance. But generally, I would also say that many of the most highest uh areas of high commuting, via transit, non-motorized mode share, are areas that are pretty dense and tall in in those in those spaces. A couple of questions about property taxes. Uh does the city anticipate any changes to property taxes with the zoning change? Um does the city anticipate any city investment in the area following the rezone? Um and then any effect on property taxes? Um in short, no, um property taxes would be levied in a very similar fashion, no uh down, no DDA or Tax Increment Financing District is being proposed. Um as as it relates to additional city investment in the area, um I think that it has uh I sure, I I think it would, it sort of might improve the score uh in a way when the city's weighing uh non-motorized investments, particularly as it's trying to meet a variety of capital infrastructure needs across the city. Um as more users are there, I think there's gonna be a logical nexus to try and find ways to support that. Transit, non-motorized use is very consistent with the city's goals about reducing carbon emissions. Uh and furthermore, the more density and users of the transit system, that's what drives the ride to expand their service. So it's not only the city investments, but as more people start relying and utilizing transit on a basis, that's how the ride is responsive to start providing more service in that area, and that might correspond with influence as well. But in short, no, it's gonna be the same tax structure that is going to um be paying taxes both on existing property and redevelopment into both city operating funds, parks and rec, the urban housing knowledge, and the like. To Alexis, non-conformities, if an auto repair shop like Stadium Auto Service needs to renovate or expand, how would the conformity requirements play out?
Um expanding, likely not permitted. You will need permission from the zoning Board of Appeals to expand a non-conforming use. In terms of renovating, renovate, interior renovations, facelift, maintaining the building is permitted for all non-conforming structures and non-conforming uses. But if the it, the expansion would be tricky. Building additions would probably not permitted because they would be expanding and intensifying the non-conformity. But maintaining the building and providing modern aesthetics is permitted.
Related to non-conformities, what is the period of non-use for a non-conforming use to be considered abandoned? For example, how long does an owner have to find a new tenant with the same use, like a restaurant, for example?
I'm double-checking it. I think it's two years.
Yep, and I would also add that um at times there that is even, even a number like two years can be not so specific. Um just a restaurant being vacant, if there is sort of clearly an intention to continue using it, um might be found to be a continuation of that use. Um abandonment's a pretty strong word, so um but I think uh the starting point is definitely a two-year
Yeah.
The the years that Alexis is referencing.
Yeah, I was actually wrong. It is one year. There must be something else that is two years, but it's one year. Um uh it cannot be reestablished after discontinuance for a period of at least one year. Um and it does provide, you know, uh something in active marketing is not necessarily con- considered uh abandoned. It is, you have closed up the doors, walked away, have no intention, and made no effort whatsoever to come back. And a year has then gone by.
Uh a comment, yay, very excited to have a more walkable Stadium Boulevard. Uh a question, are any of the parking lots currently in the proposed rezone area larger than the new maximum lot size? You talk about lot sizes, lot sizes in the TC1 zone?
Um yes, so there's no maximum lot size. Maybe you're talking about the maximum building size. And there are, the maximum building size has a diagonal of, I think, three hundred and fifty feet. I'm gonna look that up as I speak. But that is the size of um the downtown block of Main here on Washington and Fourth. Um now, Westgate and Maple Village, those are wider than that. But those are the only two single structures that are current, would currently exceed the maximum building size.
All right, um I'm gonna go to a couple of speakers. Uh let's start with Nishant Ketcherpall. My apologies if I um didn't get that name right. Um uh please address any comments or questions you have.
Thank you. Um pronunciation was pretty close, so thank you. Um yeah, so I am a big fan of this project. Um I grew up in Ann Arbor, uh moved away for a couple of years to the Bay Area, um a much genter metro area um with a lot sort of more infrastructure for biking, for transit. Um and have moved back to the city uh for for uh, sorry, moved back to Ann Arbor for grad school. Uh and so this is the kind of thing that I think we should be doing in Ann Arbor, um to, for example, get people out of cars, meet our climate goals, to lessen the housing affordability problems that we have. Uh and so this kind of dense transit supportive development is really great. Um I think, um yeah, I'm just in, I'm in strong support of what's happening with this district. Um I think uh I know earlier drafts of TC1 said that things might need to be mixed use as a requirement. Is that still the case? Um and I think that there were like minimum height requirements in some of the drafts. Are those, are those still around? But otherwise, uh as for comments, um yeah, I'm just, I'm I'm just uh in support of this as an Ann Arbor person.
Great, thank you. Uh Alexis, do you wanna address those two quick questions?
Sure. Um for minimum height, it is two stories. New buildings in the TC1 district must be two stories. That's the same as downtown. Um there is no mixed-use requirement. Uh we did debate it. But um it's a big district and not every individual, it was felt that every single address doesn't need to meet all of the goals cumulatively. But the district will provide that mix of use, so there's no mixed-use requirement. We do have a requirement that if your building is at a corner of two public streets, um no residential right at that corner. Otherwise, you are free, the buildings can be ground-floor retail and upper floors residential. The buildings could be all residential. They can be all commercial or office. But that is something that the market and redevelopment would have to decide.
Thank you. Adam Jaskovic, yeah, you'd like to address the Planning Commission with any questions or comments you have about the proposed TC1 zoning district?
Hi, my name is Adam Jaskovic. I live on Las Vegas Drive in the Dickon neighborhood at the south end of this corridor. I grew up in Ann Arbor near the north end of the corridor and then north of the Crouch neighborhood. I've been following TC1 as it has evolved over the past couple of years because I'm so excited to see the changes it can bring to my neighborhood and the other corridors where it is applicable. I walk, bike, and drive in this area often and occasionally ride the bus. I love that most of my daily needs are available within the corridor, and I'm looking forward to the possibility of more neighbors supporting even more businesses and making my neighborhood and the larger corridor area even more vibrant. Currently, walking and biking is possible in this area, but it isn't entirely comfortable. There are some segments that make you feel pretty exposed, walking on a sidewalk between a parking lot and stadium without any buffers, or riding in a painted bicycle cutter past tons of curb cuts. It's very car-centric, what could best be described as a strode. It's also quite sunny with little shade. I'm looking forward to this being improved with sticky edges and shade from the building wall, as well as the possibility of any traffic calming measures that may be taken to enhance the comfort and safety of non-motorized users. I'm extremely supportive of this and of look, and I'm looking forward to it being passed as is. I do not believe it is necessary to water it down by reducing density or making other changes. TC1 was designed to automatically adapt to different corridors by including building height limits that taper down toward existing residential neighborhoods, and I feel those limits are entirely reasonable. I think the extent of the corridor is appropriate. I also do not see a need to slow down the process. I feel like there's a lot of information out there on all of this. There's been quite a bit of excellent public engagement and process already done, and there will be, I believe, at least I think, two more public hearings on this before council will vote on it. Uh please keep one, one at um planning and then at council itself. Please keep this moving and please consider taking up the next corridor once discussions on this corridor are completed. Thank you for all of the work that you've put into this.
Thank you. Um all right, let's um bounce to a couple of other comments that we have in the Q and A. Uh plus one on cyclist, a comment, plus one on cyclist safety, stadium is a really wide road with intimidating unsafe bike lanes at the moment, so we should promote safer walking and biking as we rezone the area for denser, non-car uses. I am excited about this. Have we ever done a rezoning like this before of this size? Um I think probably the closest examples of this would be when the city rezoned uh the downtown area to D1 and D2. And then uh previously, the TC1 district was zoned for the state and Eisenhower area. Uh any other rezonings of the scale come to mind? Alexis, who has been here a while?
Um th- those would be the best examples for sheer size and scale. Um we've done blocks and blocks. Um there was a a rezoning done in the Water Hill area, like in the nineties. Um downzoning from like R4C to to R2, but in term, but the, still the acreage wasn't the same. Um so the um aside, if you wanna say what we did in the sixties, when our current, when our current zoning map was done.
Right. What will the effect be on current businesses? Increased rent? Will they be forced to build up? What happens to the current Lewis Jewelers, for example, and other empty uh lots like where Naylor was? Um I'll start, um generally, nothing. Zoning is perspective, so when zoning changes change requirements or regulations, they are uh enforced prospectively, not retroactively. So if by Alexis uh mentioning that uh the new buildings in this zone would have to be two stories, that does not mean that every building owner has to go in and pull a building permit tomorrow to add a second story to their building. What it means is they can continue to operate that building in its current form and and structure indefinitely, regardless of ownership, as long as it's following that same pattern. That said, if that building does desire to redevelop or expand, then these regulations would apply. Uh. Uh I'd like to propose adding two residential properties to the list to be rezoned, uh 540 and 580 Berwood. Um, thank you for that comment. Uh we will note and look at that. Um as proposed buildings move closer to the streets, motorists generally feel the effect and drive slower. Does the city anticipate revisiting speed limits in the area and changing them along with the change in the character of the district? Um I'm gonna to go out on a limb um out of my area, but generally, this is something of interest across the city. Our tr- our transportation team is working on, um looking at speed limits and our ability to have more impact on speed limits uh is part of the city's transportation plan. So I'm gonna say that it is definitely possible, but I think it's a broader conversation. I think that there are some regulatory limitations to that. But I do think that that is something that city uh staff is is looking at ways to consider. A comment, I'm in love with this plan. I will not be able to look at LA Fitness without seeing Housing on Top. Thanks for all you do. Thank you for sharing feedback. Um what do you anticipate the population of Ann Arbor will grow to if the TC1 district becomes fully developed? Um, I don't know. That's a great question. Um generally, we um I think part of our housing affordability uh challenges come from demand. Um we have increasing student enrollment, which has impact on our housing market writ large, not just around campus. Um we have um university as a very significant job center, both the university and the hospital. These are, they are drawing people to this community and um I think that if if TC1 were to be um quickly and wildly successful and adding a lot of housing density, um I I don't know what that projected population would be, but I do know that it would reduce some of the eighty thousand people likely who are commuting into our community Um is there anything in the zoning regulations about artificial lighting? Uh already, the storefront and parking lot up and down the the street are extremely bright throughout the night. With possibly higher buildings, potential spotlighting or other lights could be even more obnoxious. Uh I think, again, the city is um uh on an ongoing basis trying to improve their infrastructure, um such as streetlights and pedestrian scale lights. I will say from a private development, the city has now enacted outdoor lighting requirements that have very specific requirements of color temperature and uh color rendering index, um designed to be um more dark sky compliant. They have to be shielded, they have to be directed to the point source. So um as more development happens, generally, the outdoor lighting circumstance will improve along that. Shade is very important to pedestrians. I definitely had the struggle, struggle of a little too shade walking on Stadium and Maple today. Thank you for the comment. Um, strong support for TC1 rezoning in all areas designated as possible for this rezoning and do so on an expedited basis in order to achieve A20 goals. Um for those that aren't familiar, um A20 is the city's uh living carbon neutrality plan, setting the goal to zero carbon emissions by twenty thirty in the city. A big part of that is seeking alternative transportation patterns and getting more people to reduce their commuting patterns, to reduce, to result in hopefully, a reduction of fifty percent of the vehicular miles traveled in the city reduced over that timeframe. This is exciting. Seems like it would encourage more housing and dense and sustainable development, both which are needed and could support and grow our transit and non-motorized services in the city. Thank you for the comment. I'm worried the stadium will look like Maine, a canyon of tall buildings. Thank you for the comment. Uh let's jump over to a couple of speakers. Uh let's start with Adam Goodman. Um you can address the Planning Commission with any comments or questions you have about TC1.
Hi, um so I've, I've spoken to the commission before a few times about TC1. Um I, I live over in the Virginia Park neighborhood, which is, whi- which means that this West Stadium corridor is kind of the nearest commercial strip to my house, so um I wanna speak specifically about that for a bit. Um as some other people have said, the the businesses along there are wonderful. I love that we've got like four different taquerias, two hardware stores, several places to buy groceries. Um having amenities like that makes this corridor truly an asset to some of the plans that you just mentioned of of having walkable neighborhoods and giving people options on there to choose modes of transit. Um there's just one problem, though, which is that it it's not a particularly pleasant, and frankly, we unfortunately saw a tragic incident where a bicyclist was killed not that long ago. It's not a particularly safe place to walk or ride a bike or or really exist in anything but a car right now. Um I I'd like to mention, some attempts have been made to work on this in the past. Uh the two thousand and three Land Use Element has a whole chapter on this corridor, and it recommends a whole bunch of action steps, including sidewalk improvements, lighting, signage, uh in an effort to make the area more welcoming to people walking and biking. And I think many of these improvements have actually been made in the, in the intervening two decades, uh which is great, but what we see today really shows the limit of of that approach. Those cosmetic changes really did not fix the fundamental truth that this is a car-oriented and car-dominated corridor. It's chock full of drive-throughs and vast surface parking lots. And and so we we can't make this corridor truly welcome for people using all modes of transportation unless, unless we change the underlying land use patterns. And I I believe there's quite a bit of urgency to get this done soon uh before we see And I believe there's quite a bit of urgency to get this done soon, before we see more bad developments happen under the current rules. In the last two years, at least two net new drive-through facilities have been proposed, one at 2060 West Stadium and one at 300 South Maple. The plan at 2060 Stadium specifically called for a drive-through bank and a big self-storage facility. These types of uses tend to drive, actually, a disproportionate number of car trips and create disproportionately dangerous conflict areas with bicyclists and pedestrians. Thankfully, at least the drive-through components of these have so far fallen through, but, you know, I don't think we can rely on that continuing to happen, right? And recently, I even saw 2060 West Stadium being advertised as a potential car dealership. Like, really? Is that what we want here? So, you know, I really, I strongly support rezoning this whole corridor to TC1 and doing it as soon as we possibly can, because I believe it will very significantly improve the character of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daniel Adams, you can address the Planning Commission with any questions or comments you have about TC1.
Thanks, Brett. Really appreciate it. Hi, I'm a resident of Daniel Street. I grew up in Ann Arbor, and I, you know, this particular rezoning is, you know, brings up a lot of memories for me about this corridor. I grew up going to the old Fox Theater on Maple, going to the old Golden Chef Restaurant on Maple, the one that burned down in the parking lot. Yeah, you know, it's always been a very inefficiently used corridor that's been begging for exactly this kind of change that would transform it, and I'm really excited about this. I think every time a small business opens up on this corridor that has something to offer the community, especially some of the new restaurants and bars, there's this huge community response, and I'm thinking specifically here about the stacks of cars that you see lined up outside of Holmes Brewery four nights a week. And I think that anecdote really tells us something, right? Not only that this side of the city and local businesses in the community are ready for this, going to be energized by this, but how many people would be walking to Holmes and future places like it that don't exist yet, when we start letting the market build dense housing along this corridor that is set up to accommodate it? There's so many nights of the week that I think about riding with my kids up to Dairy Queen or to Baskin Robbins, or even with my wife up to Holmes, right? And I don't, because it's a very intimidating place to walk and ride your bike. So it's very energizing and exciting to see the city start to think about changes that might make it a more welcoming place for a lot of people, people who don't live here, people who do live here. And I really want to thank everybody for their hard work on this, and please rezone Washington on Plymouth with all possible speed.
Colin W., you have up to three minutes to address the Planning Commission, address any feedback or questions you have on TC1.
Hello. My name is Colin Williams, and I live at 540 Burwood Avenue, and I had the comment about adding the two houses to the district here. I have a lovely property here with a lot of land, but it backs up to two different commercial buildings, and my neighbor is, he also backs up to two commercial buildings. And just to allow ease of sale later and allow this to kind of roll into another style of use once I am out of here, or someone else wishes to develop it, it would just make it a lot easier for me, and I'd just like it if you guys could look closer at that. Thank you so much.
This seems like a great way to improve residential density and walkability. What sorts of considerations will be made to encourage and retain retailers, restaurants, and other business? While it seems like reducing vast acreage of parking is a good, businesses require some degree of parking accessibility to draw customers beyond the local foot traffic in the area. Residential, commercial, hybrid projects outside of existing downtown seem not to have worked as intended. Alexis, do you want to talk a little bit about the parking? To start, this is, to be clear, it's strictly regulatory. We're not proposing any specific business retention program, so let me start with that. But from that, Alexis, if you could talk a little bit about the parking regulations that are being considered, well, both apply today and are being considered.
So the TC1 district was out in the forefront, and we, it has no parking minimum, so buildings without parking lots is acceptable in the TC1 district. If you are choosing, and the Unified Development Code has a whole section on parking, and it has minimum parking requirements for a variety of land uses. Example, one per dwelling unit for apartments, for mid-rise apartments. And the TC1 district, whatever is written as the minimum, well, that's the maximum in the TC1 district. So zero parking is permitted, but you can provide the minimum required for that land use, pretending as if you're in another district, but just the minimum, not more. However, colleagues of mine are working through changes to the parking ordinance that would eliminate all the minimums for all of the districts and all of the land uses in the city. So homeowners, apartment owners, businesses, office buildings, so forth, would have no minimum parking requirement. If something has a maximum right now, and we do have a few categories that have a maximum, that maximum is kept as is, but the minimum drops out. This serves for a lot, this will serve a lot of goals of the city. It's very expensive to build parking. The more feeling is, who are we to judge what the minimum parking requirement is for your business? No, you know, businesses are not the same. Also, parking demands and user habits are changing dramatically. Less people are driving, less people own cars. Certainly, there's a segment that drive more, but demands and demand and habits are changing. And if we do not require parking, if it is done on an as-needed basis, that has, that will take a line item off developers, and particularly residential developers will be able to reduce their rental costs, because they don't, they didn't have to build it in the first place. We have a lot of apartments that cannot, do not fill their parking, their parking lots. Some do. But that is the TC1 parking requirement and the proposed changes that are working their way through. Now, those changes, they're going to sort of make the TC1 district parking requirement moot, because there's going to be no minimum, and there's going to be no minimum to become only the minimum. So there's a thing in there that says the TC1 district might require, or might allow a maximum of three parking spaces per thousand square feet of floor area. And so that's sort of the average of what the minimum is now.
Thank you. As someone currently spending a lot on rent, I'm grateful that the city is working to create denser, more walkable housing communities. Are there estimates as to how many additional units could result from this, both market rate and affordable? The short answer is no. We don't have specific numbers in that inventory, but part of it is definitely a thought about using land more efficiently to provide more uses on the same land that we got. So part of this is just simply trying to increase supply, but no, we have not projected specific quantities of each of those. Why not provide incentives for affordable housing, sustainability, electrification, open space, et cetera? We've got this question quite a bit, and thank you for the comment, first of all. I would just, I would just observe that these are all things that are of really important interest. I think I can speak on behalf of City Council and the Planning Commission for both of, for both of those groups. These are routine aspects of conversations about development. At the same time, what we find is trying to, trying to solve, and even at times advance all of those in positive directions on each site is really complicated. It's sort of an equivalent to the framework that Alexis was talking about, that over time, a district hopefully has that blend of uses and people where it really has, it functions really well. Likewise, if every development is trying to provide affordable housing, high level of sustainability, and open space, that is trying to, those are all really important elevated goals for the city, and it's also often really challenging to advance all of them to a significant degree on each and every lot. That said, the city's having conversations about that. We have continued to look at affordable housing premiums, for example, in the downtown. Sustainability is something that is another item on the Planning Commission's work plan. What are the potential to actually add things like electrification as incentives or potentially requirements for new development? So those are all, all goals. They're not specific, to be clear, they are not specifically tied to the TC1, but are aspects of our overall development that the city is looking at. As someone who lives off Dexter Road, I love that local shopping is within walking distance. Our grocery store is going to be able to survive here. Local shopping was the reason many of us moved here decades ago. It's a great question. I think grocery stores, again, going back to non-conforming, if they are single-story, they can continue to operate in their current form, but I will generally say grocery stores are really tough model anywhere. They are big footprint, it's a really evolving industry with delivery and the like, but the short of it is, is that I think that I have personally not seen a lot of grocery stores incorporated into multi-story developments in this region, in our city. I've seen it in other places. I haven't seen it in Ann Arbor, so I know it can be done, but I think developing a new grocery store and a new development would probably be challenging, but not impossible. But, again, zoning is perspective. If that, if those grocery stores are rezoned, they can continue in perpetuity. Another grocery store could go into those same spaces. Again, if they wanted to redevelop, reconfigure the building, that's where the requirements would kick in. Is zoning permission by, is this zoning permission by right for new projects, or will TC1 need to be approved by Planning Commission or City Council? Alexis, looks like you are well on your way to that answer.
I can allow it if need be. All right, the question, now I have a typo. I will not hit send, so I can read the question. The question is, is this zoning permission by right for new projects, or will the new TC1 projects need to be approved by Planning Commission and City Council? So if the rezoning is approved and a site is zoned by Zone TC1, then, then the site plan initiated by the owner or an applicant would be considered and could be approved by the Planning Commission. These days, our City Council only approves site plans that are associated with a legislative action, like another rezoning or some other legislative function, but if it is a purely administrative decision, the Planning Commission will approve that site plan. The reason, the rezoning would have already been taken care of.
Thank you. A comment. I came out to this meeting thinking I would support this change. I'm dead set against it. It is bad, bad, bad. I hate going, I don't, never go to downtown. Avoid downtown like the plague. I support mixed use and I support higher building heights, but do not put them up against the street. Have the parking in the front and buildings in the back. The more you reduce parking, the more people will drive out to CIO to do their shopping. Thank you for your comments.
I would only follow that up with, if the person who commented, on behalf of the Planning Commission, okay, what maybe should be the height limit that you would support in the district? I feel it is part of the conversation that maybe, you know, if you say the rezoning would be good and you support mixed use, and what, what would be the front setback that you might support? I feel that, on behalf of the Planning Commission, I think they're looking for that also kind of feedback. Sounds like you think this might go too far, but is there a middle ground that you, anyone might suggest? And I do think, if you guys nod, I think I see some nodding, this might be some of the stuff that you, you're also interested in learning about as we move forward.
Do you have an estimate on how many or percent of lots are currently conforming to the proposed rezoning? Curious to understand how many lots might need to make significant changes, should an owner, renter need or want to make changes. I don't have that. I think, Alexis, you have done some research, but I don't know that you know percentages. Generally, let me offer this, though. Again, this process has not started. We haven't submitted a petition. We haven't finalized the geography, but if you have specific questions, reach out to us. Reach out to planning@A2.gov.org. Sorry about that stumble. We're happy to go over a specific parcel with you, if it's yours or one you have a question on. We can talk to you about what we would envision the challenges of that site under the proposed TC1 look like, and answer that question.
I don't know the percentages or specifics, and it very much depends on how, what's our final boundary, but any building that is one story would become a non-conforming building. So, and that's, that's most of them. There's a new development, the Reinhardt Building that has three stories, that is, that is based, two stories, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but that is the kind of building that, that we are looking for as well, but I, you all can drive up and down as well and see, most of the buildings are non-conforming because they're one story, and for that reason alone. There are, will be no non-conforming lots, but there will be some non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures.
How much infrastructure capacity, such as water and sewage, needs to be increased to accommodate these buildings? How will these increases be paid for? Sometimes these happen through capital investments of the city, where they program upgrades to those utilities. If a development is being proposed in advance of those planned investments, the development typically has to pay the cost of extending those utilities to that site. That is, in fact, one of the barriers to affordability. That is a very significant cost if you have to upsize a water main and a road from the nearest air section to your parcel to a more significant size. That's a pretty significant cost, but it is typically part of our review and expectation put on the development, realizing that scale and density at that location. Let's bounce over to a couple other speakers. Let's start with caller ending with the phone number, caller phone number ending with 644. You can press star six to unmute your phone and address the playing question. Any questions or comments about TC1?
Yes, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Yes, my name is Kathy Boris. I live at 1726 Charlton, in the 5th Ward, about two long blocks from Stadium. I want to thank Ken Garber for speaking often at City Planning Commission meetings to remind us that reducing Ann Arbor's carbon footprint cannot be done with wishful thinking. One practical thing we could do would be to require electrification of new buildings, Zone TC1, or we could require high-quality weatherization materials in those new buildings, Zone TC1. It only makes sense to require new buildings, Zone TC1, to be sustainable and A2 zero compliant, rather than to upgrade them later. Neither can Ann Arbor's affordable housing shortage be addressed with wishful thinking. It only makes sense to require developers to include an additional number of affordable housing units in their buildings, Zone TC1. Why wait to require more affordable housing? Why wait to require more affordable housing? Some people in the current city administration promote a false notion that we need to offer juicy carrots to attract developers to build in Ann Arbor. I can't believe that this is true. We can make requirements of developers just as our neighboring municipalities do, for instance, Ypsilanti, CIO Township, and Detroit. We could do the same thing, making requirements of developers in the TC1 zone. Thank you for listening.
LMB05, if you could share your name and any questions or comments you have about the TC1 district or feedback.
Hi, yeah, my name is Lynn, and I live immediately east of Stadium Boulevard. I have to say, I'm less than excited by this proposal. It seems to be based on a hope and a prayer to make some affordable housing and meet our carbon neutrality goals. I don't understand why there are no requirements embedded in this TC1 zoning district. Specifically, I want to ask whether there- Specifically, I want to ask whether there was any planning for the transportation and. Stadium that went into this proposal. We currently have, there's a fair amount of traffic on stadium. We have grocery stores, we have hardware stores, we have restaurants. All of those require delivery trucks and. They need to be accommodated if we're going to. Continue to have those types of. Retail opportunities on stadium which are very important. So I I would appreciate some response to whether there's any transportation planning that has gone into this. And I am concerned that we will actually lose the grocery stores that we have. As we did in the downtown area. We used to have grocery stores in the downtown and they have all disappeared, so we all have to. Go elsewhere to get our groceries. Thank you for listening to my comments. I hope you get a lot more. I have to say that. The excitement that some are feeling are. Again, based on a hope and a prayer, because there's nothing in this that actually guarantees we're going to get what we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding getting to net zero, can there be a requirement to use rough areas for solar? Generally, I will, as I mentioned before, the planning commission is looking at this, the city is looking at this. I can, I can share that it is the regulatory framework that is that is quite complex. As to where building code is the appropriate place and where zoning and land use is the appropriate place for those types of. Building related utility or energy improvements. I am not saying that it is not possible, but I'm saying it's complex and the city is looking at all aspects of that, so. It is not a requirement now, but that is something that the city is looking at, not just in the TC one, but broadly that would potentially apply. Across all zoning districts in the city towards meeting the city's carbon neutrality goals. Will, will entities building new structures on lots here be required to improve sidewalks to some sort of minimum standards, Alexis?
Well, yes and no. If you are doing new construction, if you're doing a site plan. When you're finished, part of getting the certificate of occupancy, the sidewalk needs to be. The condition of sidewalk needs to meet city standards. But what I think you might be getting at is will the sidewalks be wider or somehow improved beyond the minimum standards? And so that is a no. Any damaged sidewalks, yes, they would have to be replaced or improved, but if you're looking to whether the sidewalks would be enhanced. Then the answer is no, that would be a streetscape corridor redevelopment. Project initiated by the engineers.
It sounds, sounds like the majority of speakers are in favor of this. I want to say that not everyone dislikes the current nature of the corridor. Some of us actually like a car centric area. We have enough non-car friendly areas downtown. Leave some areas of town for those who do use, of us who do use cars. Otherwise, we'll all be moving out to the townships along with our money and our business. Thank you for the comment. Related to that, a question. I think also related to traffic, the Maple Stadium corridor is a major cross-town artery for west side residents, commuters, provisioners. And for all west side businesses and is the M fourteen to I ninety-four connector. We've already seen car lanes reduced in this area and replaced by bike lanes which are sparsely used. Does the planning commission recognize that many users of the corridor will not use bikes and will continue to depend on vehicles to cross town in an efficient manner? Will the current lane configuration on West Stadium Boulevard be maintained or modified? Part of the reason that the city is looking at stadium and Maple and the other corridors is that these are. High traffic areas and they're also areas that have the greatest potential for us to shift more and more traffic. Out of vehicles onto other modes, transit, non-motorized. So I agree that. I, I don't know the volume of bike lane, bike users there. I'm sure it's increased. With the reconfiguration of stadium from its original configuration. But definitely part of this is looking at the private property aspect of how can that corridor be potentially redesigned and reimagined to make. Bicycle infrastructure more comfortable. But at the same time, the city's priorities for that. Order, I don't know the answer to that about how that cross-section could be modified or not. But again, those decisions are made in response to land use patterns, so I think that the more demand and use of that. Is going to drive and drive up that, though, any changes to improve that to be a greater. That question does not make me uncomfortable at all. Thank you very much. Do we have any idea which of the massive empty parking lots would be open for development without replacing any existing buildings? Alexis, do you want to talk a little bit about how the TC one would work to add development to an existing building?
I think the smaller sites honestly, it'd be a little bit harder to add development to it. Aside from going up. But the larger sites could add a whole nother row of buildings in front. We've already seen a little bit of that Maple Village added. The LA Fitness in front. There are three little buildings in front now. And you can see driving by, there's space for a fourth or a fifth. And so on the larger sites, you can see where this would. The new development could go in front of, much closer to the sidewalk and taller. And the existing buildings could have additional floors built on top of them. And that's how it would sort of, the TC one district, the standards are crafted, so you can keep what you've got. And then put another layer on the parking lot, if you have a deep front lawn, which the stadium district doesn't have. Significant front lawns, but they have a lot of parking. And so no one is penalized. And that's part of, that's the bulk of the reason it has no floor area ratio maximum. You can, the, the lots can keep the existing buildings that they have and build new buildings. There is no floor area ratio maximum. There are setbacks, there are height, but new buildings can be added to the parking lot or in the front or to the side. Without requiring the removal of any existing buildings just to meet an arbitrary code.
Where will all the cars of new residents park? They will either park in the parking spaces that the developer chooses to provide or not. But part of this is the goal of the city is to get more and more people making their transportation choices without using a car. What is the time horizon until we can expect the entire quarter to comply with TC one zoning? How long do you expect these sort of commercial strip mall buildings to last? This is an excellent question, and I don't have a better answer than a long time. Zoning is a long game, and I think that's. I think you hear some of the comments, both. Those that have, are, are sharing concerns about this, that this is going to have really an adverse impact. And you're also hearing comments from. Individuals who are supportive of it that do this as soon as possible because. Because zoning is just that. It is, it is a long game. This is about putting the regulatory framework in, in place. So that whether it's next year or ten years from now. We have put together the regulatory framework that results in the building type and use and form that. Will help us meet our, our goals for our community. So. As far as how long I expect these commercial strip mall buildings to last. I don't know the answer to that too, but I will just observe from a planner, plannerly perspective. Strip malls and big boxes were kind of a. A relatively recent phenomenon on land use development, and part of their reason was they were envisioned to be very flexible. They're sort of blank canvases that can adapt in a lot of different ways. I will just observe that I haven't always found that to be the case. I think some of them actually are built to a very purpose. Size or configuration that is, that has a time proved reuse difficult. And I think part of it is also there in locations that are losing viability from people wanting to go into those spaces, so. But to the answer to the question from my estimate, a long time. This plan is too aggressive in the areas that will impact existing single family homes. I would like to first see rezoning of the areas that don't impact existing residents and see what the results are and adjust from there. I worry that high density housing, when the parking will push people to park in adjacent neighborhoods. Thank you for the comment. Green space is very important, especially in densely populated. What plans are there for developing intentional green spaces into the district? Alexis, is there any green space requirements in the TC one district?
There are not. And there's not an open space requirement on the site. It was considered when the TC one's being created, but again. To allow for infield development, we are not requiring. Certain percentages of land are off limits. The corridor has a significant amount of not evenly distributed open space. So if, if you are looking for open space, the kind that can, for recreation. That's park is more than enough to serve any future residents on the, in the district. But if you're looking for green space in the terms of trees and, and front yard and building separation. There is not that standard embedded in the TC one district.
A comment, when will this happen? I'd like to know when I need to move away. Thank you for the comment. It also reminds me, if anybody would like to make sure they are kept apprised of progress of this proposed rezoning. Feel free to send us an email at planning@A two gov dot org, that same email address. We will contact you if, as future steps of this is considered, if considered. So make sure you let us know if you'd like to keep, be kept apprised of it for making decisions like that. If a developer wants to build residential, are there any requirements for lower than market price rents or prices? What do you anticipate the effect of the residential, residential would be on rental rates in existing multifamily complexes immediately west of this core? There are no requirements for lower than market price rents or prices. I think we've heard that criticism was, was brought up earlier at this meeting and then, and certainly in other forums related to the TC one district. Generally, as more housing is added, I think it will have the impact of adding supply, which will have. An impact on stabilizing or reducing rents greater than the corollary of a sort of. Restricted supplier, non-existent addition to supply. But I don't have any magic numbers that says that after a hundred units or five hundred units or five thousand units, when that magic will happen. But I generally do believe that as more housing supply is provided, it will have an impact on providing more choice. To users, which hopefully will again lower or stabilize rent prices. The Jackson Stadium intersection is currently very busy and was already recently expanded to help with heavy traffic flow. What plans are there for this intersection as the higher density buildings would likely bring even more traffic to the area? I don't know that. We can try to find that out. That is a very significant infrastructure. We can see what plans exist. As part of any development, traffic mitigation is considered as part of that. Often it results in changes to intersections, but I don't have the answer about what is currently being proposed for that intersection or not. We can see if we can find something about that before this progresses. I'm a strong supporter of the TC one zoning. I shared through email that best practices for TOD would be fifteen to twenty-five units per acre for village style densities. Doing the math on this area would minimally need to have thirty-two hundred to fifty-three hundred housing units for it to have, to effectively support transit based development. And the bus line supporting it with any meaningful scale and shift away from cars. Given the emphasis on housing in the district, could you do an estimate if twenty-five to a hundred percent of the billable envelopes were actually developed for median housing size? Would provide an estimate of the relative amount of housing that could occur over the coming decades. The tall allowable building height appears far more than what is needed for transit based sustainable development. I'm supported with see mixed objectives with allowable building heights. Whether, what are other object, what other objectives are city priorities for it? So. We could look at that scenario. It is typically, it's really difficult to project that is based on so many factors. I, I don't know that we can get to a projection of how many units might be realized. As far as the building heights. When this district was created, it was created to be responsive and contextual to a wide variety of cities. It was thought that there might be opportunities where. There might be enough separation from residentialies on properties where a higher building height might provide additional flexibility for additional uses. Additional office uses or additional residential uses. And so the reason for the height was not so specific to this corridor, but rather that was a function of. Creating a district that would have some utility across the board and provide utility across the board. As you can see in this case, I agree that the height, particularly in this corridor, has very, that three hundred foot height limit has very limited. Potential in that one area, so. I, I just don't think it's going to be a huge factor in this quarter, but that's the origination of, of the height. Thank you for your comments and questions. Parking minimums are a curse on cities, so glad to see the city's progressive policy of no parking minimums. We don't yet. It is under consideration. Thank you for giving us proactive credit. It appears that currently there are no requirements or provisions for renewable energy for developments in the district. There should be. Why not? As sustainability is an issue. I feel like I addressed this. It's definitely something that the city is looking at. It's complex and a regulatory structure, but we're trying to find the best ways that we can advance it. Since you're planning to turn the west side into the minstrosity that is downtown, you should make sure to plan for green spaces now along stadium. The comment, the second comment about green spaces. Isn't it true that modern multi-story buildings themselves are inherently more efficient to heat and cool than the vast majority of the city's current building stock? Not to mention that these will require less driving. Generally, building codes do progress. New buildings have to be built to a higher energy efficiency standard, but even that is something that the city is perpetually looking at. What are the ways we can even advance that further than the base building code requirements that are required for new construction? But generally, I agree with the comment. New buildings tend to be more efficient than older, if only because our codes.
Think a small, I think a small nuance to that is. There is a saying that the most efficient building, the greenest building is the current building. And, and that is very true in terms of the resource needs for construction. There's, you don't need additional wood or cement or metal. Because it's existing, but, but to heat and cool a building, it is more efficient to heat and cool a new building than an old building.
Just a check in on logistics. I do see a couple of speakers that I believe have already addressed the planning commission. I would ask that any additional comments you share on the Q and A. Any other speakers that would like to address, I'll keep an eye out. Time wise, we are going to be ending the meeting at nine o'clock. I would like to give for planning commissioners that are in attendance here, just a quick five to ten minutes at the meeting. If there's anything particular that has come out of the comments that you've heard that has resonated with you, that you can help guide us. And to how we craft what is considered going forward or how it's considered. So with that, I'm really, Alexis and I are going to really step up our game and try to get through as many of the remaining comments as we can. In support of broader city goals, are electric vehicle plugins being considered for the parking lot? What about electric buses, solar panels? We require, as part of our proposed parking amendments, we are going to require EV parkings as percentage. Based on the land use, you're required to provide certain types.
Parking is already required.
Already required. I think AATA is continuing to look at electric buses and solar panels falls into that same. Absolutely, we're looking to find out ways to advance that. And I would, I would say the city is really trying to advance solar and renewable energy, not only on the regulatory front, but on the choice front. By looking at ways that we can develop energy by choice on our own properties. And there's a conversation happening now about a public utility that if you haven't plugged into, you should check out.
Just to jump in a little bit, make sure to clear up some jargon if need be, the state. This is a, the state is very clear that cities, townships can regulate land use. But the state is also very clear that building codes, which includes electrification, solar panels. Insulation, lighting, you name it. The state has the authority and only the state has the authority for minimum building codes. So we have full authority on land use. What goes where, setbacks, height limits, uses permitted. But we cannot regulate, when Brett says we're looking in the regulatory framework, the state has, is the only person that can control the building codes. And we are trying. And we are trying, but. It's out of our hands. And that's what he means where the regulatory framework, we are not enabled to adopt our own building code.
Thank you. I do get jargony. Thank you for calling me on that. There's been a building boom downtown and and in other areas near downtown with high rise apartments and condos. Has housing become more affordable in these areas? No, it's very expensive. Downtown land values tend to be very high. And the they that is in a way the pinnacle of a supply and demand imbalance in our community that is amongst the most desirable places and therefore. Many of the residential units in that place in that space are amongst the most expensive. I like very much that you have considered the consideration going to affordable housing mandates in the area. I wouldn't want this to slow the reason, but it would be nice to consider that in future long term planning. Thank you for the comment. To be clear, no affordability or low market is required as part of TC one today. Can you please explain why the quarter does not end at the corner of Maple and Dexter? It seems odd to add all those small spaces.
The study area includes everything that is not a residential district. So it in. And so the north corner now is not residential zoning. Office on the northwest corner where the Oakland Mental Health Facility is and C three on the northeast corner where the Aldi is. And that's why it was included in the study area. The purpose of this is should the a part of the purpose, should our rezoning petition include every one of these hundred and ninety-three parcels or not? But the study area includes anything that is not residentially zoned.
Thank you. We would appreciate a mockup model exemplifying what this would look like. We have a tool online now. Alexis gave an overview of that. If you would like. A tutorial on that, reach out to us, planning@a2gov.org. We're happy to go over it with you. But we're also looking at ways that we might be able to improve that map to display this more specifically. So stay tuned. No promises, but it is definitely something. Four to five stories structures can be sufficient for transit or in development and to get people to switch out of cars. For the comment. Why do people hate natural gas heating? It is much more efficient and saves me hundreds of dollars per year. Because it is using fossil fuels that are barely very dangerous to the environment. They're also a finite resource. And part of the framework of about considering electrification is that we are future proofing buildings to a more sustainable and cleaner power grid. When you look at the power grid now, a very small portion of it is sourced from renewable sources. But if the more of our building stack that relies on electricity. As that grid evolves, either through the production of local solar or or regional solar or statewide wind energy. That power source becomes more and more clean and environmentally responsible. Whereas the investment in the gas infrastructure into building is very difficult and costly to undo. How does a zero setback support and enable walkability for people to reach mixed use areas that are separated by non? Doesn't make sense is walkability as an objective. I think improvements could be considered. Not sure I understand the question, but to be clear. The intention and and. Communities experience both locally and throughout the country is that scale really matters. The details of infrastructure really matter. People choose to walk in certain areas and they avoid walking in others. Part of that is a certain scale of buildings up against the street. It is often more than a single story. And. We recognize the value of mixed use in reducing trips, providing amenities and and providing sort of a more. For lack of a better term, twenty-four hour kind of experience for people in a corridor. But we are attempting to do that by form. We are not dictating the uses that must go into a building, but rather trying to create the structure that enables that. Without being prescriptive, because we have had experiences in the past where either the city or petitioners have been prescriptive, trying to achieve that and have been unsuccessful. Really trying to figure out the way to. Put regulations in place to make the development flexible. So that it can evolve over time, perhaps better than a more single use automotive designed prototype. Typos, you don't have as many as I do. How are you addressing making Ann Arbor visitor friendly student move in football games, art fairs? It's a little bit beyond this proposal, but the city does a lot in that regard. We partner very closely with Michigan. We do a lot of information sharing. I would say generally the city really recognizes the importance of the University of Michigan and how it makes our tick in a wonderful place to be. I live in the residential area east of stadium between Polly and Liberty. I agree with some would say this plan is a wish and a prayer. I don't see how changing the TC one zoning will make the area more easily walkable. I don't see our taller buildings closer to the street will improve walkability norm more safely bikeable. I'd like the idea of more walkability, but I don't see how this plan addresses that. I also think two story buildings would be better for lots backing onto the single family residential areas. I also think two story buildings would be better for lots backing to to the single family residential areas and parking on the back. To create more distance between the residences behind the commercial buildings in front. Thank you for the comments. Small Parker Plaza to the south end of the corridor would be nice, but I think that's probably some of the petition council or the parks department for. I appreciate the feedback. We'll look at that. And yes, parks is often. Trying to find the balance of providing additional amenities while already a pretty large portfolio to maintain, but any anything is possible. I'm against affordability requirements in the TC one as a general rule. If you required, say, twenty-five percent affordability, a small business owner looking to renovate their property. Would be required to add and administer affordable units for massive projects seeing a density bonus, maybe affordability requirements makes sense, but the sort of flexible TC one usages from large scale to small school scale. We should not be requiring affordability in small buildings because it will serve as a poison pill too much needed missing middle housing. Missing middle housing for those is sort of a planning term of art that talks about how historically there was often much more flexibility and. Typology and the availability of things like duplexes and multiplexes and. Granny flats in our residential areas and over time, many communities such as ours zone those away so it can only be single family detached zoning. Missing middle is generally a reference to providing more housing. Types within traditional residential zones. I like to note that green space doesn't exist at the moment in the oceans of parking strip malls that are on the corridor right now. For the comment. Is there any plan to have a parking lot for people from out of town drivers to park and for them to ride a bus all the way to Michigan Stadium? This plan would save a lot of cars in the Maple corridor. Would you consider this plan? Generally, yes, the city actually has identified parking rides as a strategy for trying to reduce those vehicular miles travel. So it's definitely. Potential.
I also typed that there is a parking ride within the area. There's one at Vets Park. And there is a parking ride on Miller at M fourteen and the ride operates Saturday football shuttles to the hotels on Jackson Road. And I'm sure if a larger parking lot could be found, the a parking, a shuttle, football shuttle will serve it.
I think it makes a lot of sense to cross the streets at the north and south ends as they're existing non-residential uses there. It includes all of the corners of the intersection, which I feel does a good job of bookending the corridor. For the comment. Existing bike infrastructure on the quarter is sparsely used because the area is full of auto repair shops, drive through strip malls with minimal crosswalks. You have to go. Point four miles without a signalized crosswalk from Maple to Liberty, but just isn't much to bike in the area, not to mention the two lanes of three mile per hour plus traffic that are not all separated for bike lanes, which is unsafe and intimidating by claim. The comment. Several well respected studies showing that added market rate housing decreases rents from what they would otherwise be without new housing. Trying to force developers to provide subsidized housing slows up the production of housing. Subsidized housing is a community responsibility, which is why we text ourselves for. Thank you for the comment. That is no open questions. I am going to jump all over this pause and say thank you very much. I am also going to say and remind you that this is not your only opportunity. If this progresses, there will be public hearings scheduled at both the planning commission and the city council. Timing wise, I don't have a specific date, but to that end, like I mentioned. Email either planning@a2gov.org. Thank you for the screen share Alexis or Alexis Delio, city planner at ADILIO@a2gov.org. At both of these emails, you may. Send us a question. You may send us a comment. You can send us. A suggestion, or you can say, I'd like to talk to you more and learn more about this, how what it means or how it affects my property or a property. Feel free to do any of those things. And as I also said, also just send us a note saying, I just would like to keep track of this. Please put my email address on your list and keep me apprised of milestones in this process. With that, thank you everybody for your comments. As noted, this being recorded, the transcript of the question and answer will also be saved from this as well and made available. Commissioners. I have provided you up to thirteen minutes instead of ten minutes. With any questions or feedback that you would like to share with us from what you heard and to help us move this forward in the most. Informed way that we can. I want to remove the screen Alexis, so Commissioner Get Randall can see and address anybody. To provide anything. Not that you have to.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
Thank you for this, guys, and thanks for all of the questions and comments. I think the only thing I'm still a little bit hung up on is the height. Because this corridor to me, we've talked about this in ORC. I think this quarter to me feels like it. It is more sort of that like four to five story. I don't know if that's like a conversation that we could have maybe when we bring this back to like the broader planning commission. I'm not sure what I would. I don't know, something about like a hundred and twenty foot building even in like. The West Gate area just feels like it kind of would be out of scale. Because there's more like it is more of a neighborhood deal than Eisenhower. So maybe that's just something we could keep noodling on.
Thank you.
Black noodles.
I'd like to also kind of piggyback on that a bit and say, I think it would be worth it for us to think about. And we got, we got some comments around this, especially in some of the written comments. How does this area feel different than than the the South State one? And I know that you all have done a lot of things in terms of this setbacks and stuff like that to be able to kind of reflect what's going on in this area. You've cautioned us a lot as we've gone through it. Gone through this whole idea of TC one zoning to really take it district by district and to really think carefully about what. What is the character that we want to preserve in these areas? And I guess I would challenge ourselves as a planning commission, as planning staff to think about. What makes sense here in terms of what we want this to feel like? There are some. Awkward legacy items here in terms of this pattern of. Ingress and egress of the two driveways that were set up along the stadium for businesses. So there's just so many curb cuts along here. And that's different than other places. And so how do we deal with that? How do we deal with that in relation to the pedestrian and bike safety stuff like? What are I just so it's not only what we want it to look like, but how do we deal with the? The kind of things that we're saddled with in terms of the past as well. Think about how we need to fine tune this in order to make that feel right. And to function well. And then I do think it's worth it for us to think about some green in this area too, in a way that like, do we want it to just feel like downtown? Do we want it to like, I don't know, it's something for us to think about. I think just because it is close to neighborhoods and it is a place where we want people to walk. And I know that, you know. We got some comments along the lines of that tonight as well. And. You know, I know that like based on what. Mr. Leo was talking about around it being like any corridor improvements are initiated from the city, but there are some things, you know, that you were required to do around street trees and things like that, that. There could be ways that we kind of think about, okay, well, what is the end game? Do we have a lawn extension in this area or not? Like, how does that function really? Like, do we want that to be? Green? Do we want that to be all paved with with street trees and grates? Like, what do we? How do we want to think about this area in terms of like the 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 character of it in that way? And I just think we have some work to do to think more carefully about fine tuning it to this area and really thinking about what our end goal is. Which is to make it more viable for people to take transit and to feel comfortable walking and to have businesses and to be able to accommodate cars to a certain extent too. And what's that balancing act? So I I guess I just feel like we need to do some more fine tuning and visioning around how we want the stadium TC one to really be. Commissioner Lee.
Thank you. And just as a heads up, I think I see Lisa in the attendees, Lisa's cell. So I don't know if she was just looking on. Thank you to everybody for the comments. I similar vein of thought, land use planning really should be done in concert with transportation planning. So really taking a look at complete streets. The sense of, you know, implementing some road diets, creating insulation for better bikeability. The intent of, I think, removing setbacks is generally intended to. Try and the built environment influences human behavior and how we, you know, behave in certain spaces. If you're given thirteen feet in the car lane with three car lanes, you're naturally going to feel more comfortable speeding. So so using kind of bringing more attractions to visual attractions to the stadium by minimizing setback. I think is an advantageous thing. The the question also is going to be. How does this develop over time? Because it's not like boom, you know, all of these developments are happening. I mean, we're going to be living with the existing curb cuts and we're going to see incremental change. So. From the massing standpoint, I do think about the applicability of a possible TC two or something along those lines. When you have existing buildings that are ten, twelve, thirteen stories, you can think about an urban environment in which that landscape is more legible. But. If you have, I think I saw a comment about Lewis Jewelers in in the chat box. Could you imagine a, you know, a hundred twenty feet building going up right next to that? So. Thinking about the continuity of the urban landscape and really thinking about, again, advocating for complete streets. And making sure that our lands land use is done in concert with transportation. I think it's going to be a critical piece. And then also really thinking about what what does the overall neighborhood feel of stadium? Look like what what functions does it have? So it's really kind of answering those questions is going to be critical for us as we move forward. So. But overall, I really appreciate everyone's feedback. These are great questions. I do appreciate everyone's different viewpoint, so.
Unless commissioners think that I am treating my commissioners very poorly, Commissioner Sol Bay is recusing herself.
Oh, yeah, my bad. That's right. And I have to make, I don't, I work for Oxford. I've got to make that disclaimer. I don't think we own anything in the Liberty area. So. But I did want to make at least that disclosure as we have these discussions. But, yeah, anyways. You're right. I totally forgot about that with Lisa. Thanks.
Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
I just have a. I don't know if this process procedural, whatever. I know we designed TC one to be very flexible and sort of adapt, you know, and we know that these corridors are different contexts. I mean, is there? Is there the ability to make some of these dimensional changes? Or other types of changes and still call it TC one? Or are we looking at like more of a TC two, TC three? Situation.
I would say there's a couple of ways that it could be done. Either way would require some pretty significant ordinance work. One would be to employ something akin to our D one, D two. Where we have sort of a base district, but then we apply some different area height placement standards based on character districts. So one approach would be to model that. I don't know that frankly, that would be any better. Or worse than just doing a TC two or new district. In any case. It would require some changes to the district and then obviously part of that decision would be. Sort of the timing and connection connectivity of that versus developing that ordinance and when to apply it to it.
That would take long. That would take longer if we did an entirely new zoning district. Yeah.
It would, it would kind of depend. I would say, you know, we can amend, you're talking about an amendment either way to the UDC. We might be able to work within the TC one, but it would be, it would be, the situation would be the if blah, 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 then your height is this. If this, and then at some point it becomes so complicated. You, it's cleaner, more, more user friendly to maybe do a TC two. And then, then the speed depends on how, how different you'd like. Do you want to start from scratch? Do you want to like take the bulk of it, but just swap for discussion purposes? Swap one twenty for eighty. And so it, it, it's very, it is what you make of it.
Okay. I'm definitely of the mindset that I don't want to start from scratch. You know, I, I heard a commenter about like the, you know, that one, that one parcel. They're trying to sell as a car dealership. Like, I know we don't, you know, like, like would not be within, I think what we're trying to do with transit corridor zoning.
Yeah, like if you're, you can imagine if you're not opening up the, we, we may not have the dis, need to have the discussion about permitted uses and we can only focus on dimensional standards or may, you know, so it is what you make of it.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you to all of the attendees for we have, we had several speakers and ninety nine questions. We almost got to the threshold. So think, but thank you. Again, the sort of is the, the final two very preliminary meetings to share this concept. You're hearing some feedback from the commission, which has probably been a result and sort of another conversation, I'm guessing with our subcommittee on how to consider some of these changes. Thank you very much for Mr. Lipson for providing our hundredth question. That makes me happy. Don't forget to email us at planning@a2gov.org for again, questions. You want to learn more, you want to just be kept apprised of milestones in this process. You can accomplish all of that through that email address and thank you. Thank you all. Have a wonderful, wonderful.
We are adjourned, right? You don't need to do, we don't need to move or second or anything. We're good. Okay, great.
Bye guys.
Thanks you all. You did a fabulous job. You must be exhausted. Thank you.
Are there more of these? Like, no, this is it. Okay. Awesome.
There's more meetings.
No more. Yeah. You did the one in person on this one. Okay.
Good night.
Thanks. Bye.